Welcome everyone and everyone on telephone to today's May 12 Town Council meeting. Sorry we started a little bit late, we had some technical difficulties that we wanted to take care of. So if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance who are able.
Pledge of Allegiance, shoot the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Todd, if you could lead some members please.
Absolutely. Bow heads, our heaven and father, once again an honor and privilege that we are able to gather, Lord, and we appreciate the ability to do so even in the midst of all the torment that's going on around the world with COVID. Lord, we ask that you'll be with the ones that are not able to be here if they want to because of this issue. Lord, we ask that you'll put angels around them, watch out for them. We ask that you'll be with this meeting, we ask that you'll guide this council as they make decisions. And we ask all this in your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. We're welcome, please. Please stand. We're going to start today with a special presentation and request. This first resolution I'm going to read, I do so with a heavy heart because I knew Seth pretty well from when we were younger men running around town in Tassau and Tassau County. And his passing has struck a lot of us. And it's very important to recognize our people who give more than they are asked. They just, they don't have to be asked, they just give and give, give their time, give their expertise. So I'd like to read this resolution and hopefully someone of Seth's family's on. And if not, I'll get with them personally to give them copies of the resolution. So whereas Andrew Seth Allison, Seth displayed a loving and caring example for others to follow. And whereas Seth served the town of Tassau in Tassau County for many years as an emergency services provider, spending most of his life as a firefighter and EMT, where he aided many in need of medical emergency attention. And whereas Seth used his skills to help save lives all across Tassau County and the town of Tassau. And whereas Seth will remain in the memories of all that were blessed to have known him. Now therefore be it resolved, the Tassau Town Council does hereby recognize Andrew Seth Allison for his many years of service to his community and declares Wednesday, April 8, 2020, as Andrew Seth Allison Day in the town of Tassau, Virginia, given under my hand this 12th day of May, 2020.
Right, can you say that to me, please, in the sermon?
Yes. Next on their agenda is Regina Sayers regarding the Community Investment Partnership. Ms. Sayers?
She will read. Thank you, Mary, and also Mr. Day and the city council members. I appreciate the opportunity that you've afforded me to speak with you all tonight. And Lori and Stacey should be on here as well, okay, if I miss anything. And thank you for the resolution for Seth. I did it personally and I certainly as a citizen of the town of county certainly appreciate everything you did. So let me say that, I truly appreciate that. I appreciate you all doing that, I sure as family does too. But the new business partnership is a partnership between Tassau County Chamber and Platoon Community Action. We need the actions and together we are hoping to raise funds through both through individual businesses, foundations and even local government and IDA to help us to distribute funds to small businesses that have been economically injured due to this COVID nineteen. Many of our small businesses or micro businesses may or may not be able to reopen because they do not have the funding resources to be able to do so. These funds are not alone and many of our micro business, small businesses do not qualify because they're still proprietor, so they didn't qualify for employment, they may not qualify for the payroll protection plan or for other federally federal funds as well. And we do not want to go into debt or accrue additional debt. So we've designed this partnership to protect these small businesses, to help these small businesses to reopen. As the Tassau County Chamber, we also want to assist them in reopening. We want to help them to renovate their businesses, we need to assist them with marketing, maybe even potentially help them with their business plans. But we want to look at helping those small retailers, small stores, restaurants, whatever brewery, their salon, their wine room. All of these businesses that are the backbone of our community, they're the first ones to step up to the plate and give those gift certificates and sponsor those little league teams and sponsor those bowling teams and sponsor those beauty pageants and they're backbone of our community. So the Chamber wanted to assist them and to help them. We have one that St. Paul, Virginia, I found some information today, that St. Paul, Virginia is also kind of doing the same thing. They are calling theirs spark and are the community investment project. And the town of St. Paul is working with their IDA and they are giving grants to those people that apply up to $5,000. And then they're going to have $20,000 that they will be loaning out and that they will be making out in months. And I don't know if that's being put one huge grant, one huge loan or not. But other areas have done this, we thought we would get, we thought about this for a little while and start getting everything together that others seem to be falling right on their heels. So we do appreciate the opportunity to present this to you all and hope that you will be able to assist us, to assist their businesses. We have not only will the Chamber be looking at the applications, it will have an interview committee, but we also, review committee, but we also have each community to appoint someone to be on this committee. And so far we have Kathy Payne from Woodville, Virginia on the committee, as well as Aubrey Mullis from Tassau and Connie Allen from Richland. And Lori has worked on grants through some foundations and some other places as well. At this time we do have a couple of donations, one was actually from someone from out of town. The police in Tassau County and have victory at that time. And then one of course was through Appalachian Agency because we know how important our small businesses are in supporting us and supporting the things that we do for our seniors. So I'm hoping that you all will can give this some consideration and help us to help our businesses to get back on their feet, to show them that we care for them and we truly are investing in them because they have invested in the community for so long.
What's other community do? Regina, could you, could you list out the other communities that are involved with this?
Currently, what, do you mean in Tassau County? We have talked with, I've talked with Tim Taylor. I hope to be, they are in their budget process, very much like you all and with the county as well. Everybody was very supportive and then Lori and I actually did a presentation with the Woodville Town Council. I have reached out to Mike Watson this week. Everyone was very supportive, but whether or not there's funding there, you know, I have not received any, you know, figures on any of that yet. But Lori and I do have a meeting tomorrow with the county IDA at the behalf of Mr. John Erickson from Dwyer County.
Hey Regina, this is Chris Brown, do you have any funding secured yet?
Yes, we've had two donations so far, but they're, you know, not anything, you know, they're not hundred thousand dollar donations, but we have had two donations. One, as I said, was from someone that lives out of the state, they actually live in Maryland, but they are still vested in this community, they used to live here. And then of course Appalachian Agency that I work with, that we have made a donation as well. So we're asking individuals or also asking businesses that are open, that have stayed open, if they would be able to be willing to assist us. And then we are in the process of planning a fundraising concert, a benefit, a virtual Facebook concert for the end of this month as well, Lori and I are doing that as well.
Hey Regina, this is Todd. Can you let me know what Tim and Mike are doing?
I certainly will, I hope to hear back from Tim. Tim felt that they had some money in a relief, a fund that they had, that he felt like that they would be able to convert those funds from that relief fund over to the businesses that they were going to do business with. And we partner with Platoon Community Action because they are following C-3 and all contributions can be charitable and tax deductible, that's really fair.
And also John, John Asher of course, do you have any applications presently or is it too premature to think about that?
Lori, I think you can answer that better than I. Last town, Lori, last Friday they had 12, Lori had 12 applications. So Lori, are you still, are you on there? Can you respond? And Friday, last, the past Friday, Mr. Day, we had 12 applications.
Okay, well she, if I knew which one she was, we might be, is she not online? Because she might be muted, but I don't know which number she would be. But anyway Regina, it's no hurry, if you can just get back to me and also if you'll let me know from, I know the number's going to increase, right now you've got 12, but just what jurisdictions they're in?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
We do, we do have, we do have 12, however, I'm getting emails basically on a daily basis from, you know, our small businesses wanting to know if they're approaching deadline and as of now they're not. So we do have 12 and as you would like to say, I spoke to two different people who have been working on their application. Their application, we've asked even to make sure that they show their entries and, you know, a lot of people have sent those up or, you know, our application or budget that we've requested to their CPA because they clearly want to make sure that those numbers are right. So we're, they're, you know, afraid, it's like, you know, the CARE Act and PPP have, you know, a lot of times those tools were opened so quickly and closed so quickly, they're just afraid there was a deadline. So a lot of people here lately I've been in touch with, you know, they're still working on theirs and they'll be able to take three people that are still working. But so how many have 12 in? Lori, Mr. Day asked how many, do you know what jurisdictions that those have come from?
Specifically from Tassau?
Let's see, I mean, I didn't, I mean, would you like to read it, I mean, would it be okay if I just, you know, name specific business, I mean, would you like me to do that?
I hate to put either one of you on the spot, actually either one of you at a later date tomorrow or sometime could actually email, emails and just let us know, we're just curious of.
Well, I can tell you, but this, this comes from the town of Tassau. I have Richland and I have Woodville, Virginia. And also many of our ATV places have shown interest as well and even submitted their applications already.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks Lori, thanks Regina.
Well, I thought was one of the reasons that we wanted the review committee to come for each one of the jurisdictions because we didn't want that to be Chamber decision. We want the people that knew these businesses or knew these business owners. And, you know, so that it was really very equitable across, you know, all of the jurisdictions as well.
Right.
And I might add this too, this is also, you know, a partnership with the Chamber that we plan to establish and remain there. So in the event that, you know, this COVID crisis is a terrible thing that we're all going through, but it is one of the things that we have a goal for it to remain in effect. If you have any misfortunes of any kind that would affect any of our micro businesses, you know, it would be there as, you know, sort of safety net for us as a Chamber to be able to assist with.
That's excellent, well thank you ladies very much and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate your, to tell, thank you.
Thank you. So next, new business recognition, we have none right now, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. The budget work session of April 22, 2020, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move to approve them.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to approve the budget work session of minutes. Next, the approval of the Town Council IDA special call meeting of April 29, 2020. We need to approve those minutes, can I get a motion to approve? So move. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries for the Town Council and IDA special call meeting on April 29. Next, the approval of minutes for the council meeting of March 10, 2020 and the emergency called meeting COVID-19 of March 25, 2020. I get a motion to approve minutes? So move. I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yes, the motion carries, all minutes approved. So next, the approval of financial statements and financial reports for March and April 2020. So can I get a motion for approval of the financial statements and financial report? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Okay, the financial statements and financial report for March and April 2020 are approved. Next, the Committee and Conference Updates section, Planning Commission Committee, Councilmember Davis.
We have not had a planning commission meeting. The last update that I get in the March council meeting was the last time that we met. We met, I think, last month before that meeting, so there's no news.
What? Yeah, thank you. Next on the agenda, unfinished business miscellaneous, am I missing something here? Or is there something we should be going through? I don't think so, right?
No, there's no unfinished business.
Okay. So next, new business, the previous smart scale application, Special Manager Day.
Okay, Councilman Brown and other elected officials, they inquired about why the intersection there at Markit and, is that painful now, yes, it's free, yeah, never did get approved. And to tell you the truth, the calculations that go through Richmond on how they figure those projects is beyond my knowledge and probably beyond my understanding. But I can tell you that the V-Train, the Virginia Transportation, and it's a whole program that encompasses the entire Commonwealth. And in my opinion, if the route, if the route is not in the middle of a travel corridor, a main travel corridor, which we can argue that that is, for whatever reason, the accident reports in that area, you know, I really don't have an answer other than what you've got in the packet right there, it just didn't score high enough. The V-Train's program is a really good program, it's 100%. There's a couple of methods, well, one method that they specifically said that we could bring to them, however, it's never, that we know of right now, it's never happened in the Commonwealth to override the program. But the program's not that very old either, so anyway, I apologize for not having an answer that you can quantitate, but unfortunately it just didn't qualify. We'll look at other opportunities when the V-Train comes up, we'll look at other opportunities.
Any questions? Okay, so next, the approved resolution of support for the current small smart scale application.
I can read it, you can read it.
Oh, I can read this.
Yeah, you're much better than mine.
The resolution of support, whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia Smart Scale Program has established a prioritization program whereby transportation projects are selected for funding based on the cost affecting the effectiveness of those projects to meet performance goals. And whereas the Tassau Town Council desires to submit an application for an allocation of funds for Business US Route 19 from Bulldog Lane to Steels Lane under the Smart Scale Program. And whereas this project will address the B-Train's needs category of corridor of statewide significance for safety improvement. And whereas the Tassau Town Council understands this project to include the widening of Business US Route 19 to a three lane typical roadway with a two-way left turn lane from Bulldog Lane to Steels Lane. And eastbound left turn lane and westbound right turn lane will be constructed at intersection of Business US Route 19 and Bulldog Lane. An exclusive westbound left turn lane will also be constructed at the Steels Lane intersection to allow vehicles to turn without impacting through movements. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Mike Lepupps, on behalf of Tassau Town Council, hereby support this application for improvements described to complete state and federal funding under the Smart Scale Program. But I guess we have to vote before.
Yeah, they just needed more to perceive that as, not good.
So aye, all, can I get a motion to support the aye?
I'll move, we approve it.
I get a second? Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to support this resolution, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So a resolution of support passes? Thank you. And next, the budget amendment, Manager Day.
In the 2018-19 fiscal year budget, we had it in there for the under zone vehicle. As you know, that's the only vehicle we got, it's roadworthy. But because of the boom truck went down, we ended up taking that out of there. But I had an opportunity the other day to take advantage of a vehicle under state procurement, by the way. And the budget amendments that we're recommending in order to pay for that are as follows. And all of these are in the general fund, but it's 4015, 4150, 4360, 4015, 4230, 4160, 4285, 4276, and 4110. It's a $26,500 vehicle, I actually went to put it on the last gen and I didn't, it's a good looking vehicle. I just need approval to do what's already done.
So you need the approval to reallocate the funds?
Sure, yeah.
I get a motion for approval to reallocate the funds to purchase the new vehicle?
Motion to approve.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to support the reallocation of funds, please state so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Everybody wake up.
So Todd, the motion carries to reallocate the funds. Now Ms. Reagan will give us a financial update during the COVID-19 crisis.
During this COVID-19 period of time, Manager Day has put their IT Director Sean Hagie into kind of tracking their expenses and revenues. That way we are eligible for any kind of grant funding in the long term that we would be able to already have that information together. So Sean and I have been working to track their revenues. And you have to excuse me one second, I cannot find that page. But overall, in the general fund, I mean, we're doing pretty good right now. Our meals tax is actually up because we have more fast food restaurants instead of your sit-down restaurants. So, you know, people are still supporting those businesses, still going out there. So that has actually helped us instead of hurt us. You can see on our chart here that we've graphed it from, or not graphed, we've charted from October to April. And it's, it's really not hurt us that far in our general fund. But if you look over to our water and sewer funds, you'll see that the month of April has went down just a little bit. Believe it or not, during this, you know, time of wash your hands, our water consumption has went down. And I've kind of tried to look at why that happened. So kids are not at schools, so our school's water consumption went down. People are not getting their hair done, so they're not having their hair washed at the salon. Your restaurants are not open, so people are not using the restrooms and the water in the restaurants. Your, your doctors and dentist offices have had limited patients. So there's, there's a lot of factors that went into that. So that would mean that our billable revenue has gone down. So I do think that the month of May, I think that we will see an impact from that less billable revenue. Anybody have any questions?
We will continue to track those and as Leanne said, appointed Sean a month ago. And the reason we did that was because there will be, I hope it's not to tell you the truth, but there may be an opportunity for the town to try to recoup some losses through the federal government just like they're doing for businesses right now, we haven't seen that opportunity yet. But we are tracking it the best we can. The B-pole, which is not, you know, due to later on, I'm sure it will take a hit. It's just, we don't, that's once a year, so we will continue to report it back again for if they come in and learn information.
Is that it, Leanne?
Yes, that's all that I have.
Any questions?
Questions.
Okay, so we'll move on. So I need event discussion, the cruise ends, fireworks, Main Street festival and general operation of Aqua Park in Lincolnshire Pool, Manager Day.
Okay, we'll, I want to discuss this a little bit with staff, Rob and that's been keeping up with this. I can flip my coin just as easy as anybody else can. I have no idea, you know, when the governor says this Friday, he's saying two to four weeks. Well, the difference in two weeks' worth of expense and revenue and a month's worth of expense and revenue don't match anywhere along the line. So we've got a lot of events scheduled, there's a lot of planning that goes into these events. And we're doing the best we can to manage them. And, you know, we'll talk a little bit about tonight about the Aqua Park. To me, there's no reason to open the Aqua Park until probably July the 1st. This, this weekend, two to four weeks could take you into June, I've still got to float that Aqua Park. But then at the same time, if it's not open by July the 1st, if we can't have it by July the 1st, there's no need after, in my opinion, July the 15th even to start putting it up because you got one month of August and then cold weather is going to, so it's very, everybody's going to have an opinion of that, but it's just been really complicated to track. But Rob is going to go over what the governor's got listed as of today. If all of you had a chance to read the email, Northern Virginia, he's actually putting the brakes on there. They're opening up a little later than what he's doing the rest of the Commonwealth regardless of the number of outbreaks of COVID. I'll let Rob pick up and go over some of these dates.
Well, in your packet, you've got the different phases that he's going to go into. This Friday, he does not extend that, that's going to be our beginning of Phase 1, which still means you're safer at home, especially if you're vulnerable, no social gatherings, you're not in 10, continued social distancing, continued teleworking, face covering. distancing, continued teleworking, face covering recommended in public, easing limits on business in faith communities. And those businesses are going to be easing, or they're talking about our fitness centers, our salons, our barber shops, little mom and pop stores, things like that. Still no dining restaurants, but for Phase 1, they're estimating two to four weeks, but they also add or longer on the end. We don't know what that's going to be. Once you enter into Phase 2, the only difference in those stipulations is that there's no social gatherings in more than 50. It goes from 10 to 50. Everything else still applies. They've also put that phase, two to four weeks or longer, so we don't know how long that's going to be. Now, the final Phase 3, which is what we're looking forward to because it opens up everything, but it's saying that to reach this phase, it could be 10 to 12 weeks away or more. So you're talking in the August, the beginning of August, end of August, if we're lucky. So that's what we need to look at when we're starting to look at all these events that we're getting ready to talk about. Now, as far as our Aqua Park, I kind of compared that to the fitness and exercise facilities and their mandatory requirements. And as far as a fitness center, they're talking about separating the fitness equipment like 10 feet. Well, that's kind of hard to do at our Aqua Park. And they're talking about disinfecting each machine as each person gets off. So I don't know how we extend one child through, disinfect the whole Aqua Park, and then send another child through. It's almost impossible. Even with our pool facility, how do you keep them six foot apart in the pool?
In one lane.
In one lane. You can do only one lane, open lanes, you swim, one lap, you come back, and the next person. We don't even have that really established at Lincolnshire. So that's what we're, we've started to follow those guidelines as far as the fitness centers to apply toward our Aqua Park and our pool. So those are the things that we really need to think about, and think about whether we can open those up or not. It's just a month-by-month thing, we don't know.
Well, you know, in terms of several months or even several weeks in advance, the big festivals, the big events all over Southwestern Virginia have already been canceled. It takes too much time, energy, money, just juice to plan these things when it's going to be jerked out from under you.
That's right.
Maybe we could just take the summer off. We've been working awfully hard to keep these events coming, and maybe it'd be kind of lessening how valuable they are because we don't have them for a while.
If you look in your packet, the events that are going to be effective, I think that one one we need to look at is the Music on Main Cruzeins, Fourth of July celebration, the Main Street Moments Festival. After that, and then it's pretty much pushed to October. I hope to do this for good value.
Yeah, it was Amanda, you know, who is in charge of all these events, who had thought maybe the Fourth of July thing could...
Right, we actually got options in there about the Fourth of July. Do you want to go right there?
Yeah, you can do it. Good job.
Okay, I did talk to the fireworks people, and we've already had a deposit of $4,250. Once you pay that, then the only thing to do is the other half, the $4,250. So I asked them what our options were because of the situation that we're in. They said you could do Option 1, which is display their fireworks on July 4th. We would not be able to have a concert, food vendors, bounce houses, and everybody be sitting in their cars. Basically, but they still get to shoot off the fireworks and still get to have those. Option 2, which they said a lot of localities were looking at, was moving their rain date to Labor Day, September the 7th, sort of an opening, the community backup celebration. That, they would still let me pay just the balance of 4,250, it'd be just like we had it on the board. Option 3, if you postpone it until the next July, we're going to lose 25% of our deposit because they retain insurance companies that they have to rewrite everything for the next year. So they would retain that 25%. We would keep 25% of our deposit with them, but we would end up paying $5,312.50 next July. Now, we do have a recommendation from Tassel today, since they are handling that event for us. They have decided that they thought it was best to continue with plans to display the fireworks on July 4th, have them at 9:30, have no food vendors, no bounce house, no band. They struck people that they will stay in their cars, but they want to move where we fire them from. Instead, if we move those to the parking lot between the two baseball fields at the middle school, it would be a higher elevation, and then we could access parking lots all around, such as the middle school, the old rainy lot, the YMCA, food line, to kind of spread the people out, but they could still sit in their cars and watch the fireworks. She has talked with Irene Mullins, and she said that they didn't think they'd have a problem of us moving the fireworks there. I would have to contact fireworks company to make sure that it meets the stipulations because they go and they measure everything, and it has to meet certain requirements. But if there's no problem with them, then that should be fine.
They say anything about the radio? They want to stay in cars?
They'd stay in their cars and just watch the fireworks.
Is there any possible we could get the Community Channel, the music, radio station to help me do this?
We can check the car.
We can check them.
That way you have Mr. McCall turned on by channel, I mean, if the channel didn't want to, you had your music and your fireworks.
Talk to your chamber director and see if that can't be worked out.
Well, it wouldn't work, it would be difficult to do.
They just have to agree to do it during that time.
Right. Little bit of coordination have to take place.
So is cancel okay with moving the location and proceeding forward with Fourth of July fireworks? The only difference, I think, before, where everybody kind of sent their vehicles anyway, for the last two years, if I remember correctly, it was raining.
Last year, we sat at the old magic park.
And everybody liked to, you start rolling once, that thing.
Yeah, and if you get out and sit on your tailgate, or you sit in your trunk or something, you know, it's okay, that's fine, you know. We're not out looking to... It would give us something to look forward to in the summer, a few things to look forward to.
Especially kids.
Right. Now, do we want to break these up into separate votes?
I would say, just to keep it straight.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation from Tassel today for Fourth of July.
Got a second? Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries that I pulled the Fourth of July fireworks, but I have a new location. So next, and this is the Main Street Moments Festival. Robin, is that on?
It's currently scheduled for Saturday, July 25th, which now is also the day of graduation. So they're recommending that we move that to Saturday, August 15th. I checked the Community Calendar, there's nothing on there. The fair will be the following week.
School starts the following Monday. I don't think they're going Thursday, Friday start, they're going Monday start this coming.
Yeah.
If they start.
Yeah, see, that's the thing, if they do start.
Yeah, this would all be candid anyway.
It would be.
Yeah, because you're right on that 12th and 15th.
Well, for Main Street Moments, they have those bouncy things, and those are expensive.
Yeah.
They'll have to reserve them and pay, they'll have to pay months on them and all that.
So the recommendation again is to move, just need a motion if you want to proceed with that.
I move that we, I move that we move Main Street Moments.
You make a motion to move Main Street Moments?
Yeah.
Okay. Did I get a second?
Are we moving the location with the date?
No, it isn't, but you know, it's still going to be...
I had the middle school.
That's still under the, what, 50 people, 20 people, 50 people?
Yeah, by August.
Well, by August, it could possibly be freed up.
Right, it could be, it could be.
And see, the complication for Amanda is, and everybody else from Tassel today, she can start planning it, just put a whole lot of money and energy into planning it, and then it can last many hours.
That's my problem, just not doing a cancel this summer. It's too expensive.
Yeah, you just don't know. Like I said, you can flip a coin, everybody can flip a coin, you know, that's all we're doing.
Well, it kind of, it's kind of hit to us. If in fact the town is on a really tight budget, this gives us an opportunity to maybe sort of save some funding that we may need elsewhere. And then we don't have to worry about it.
Who knows?
The anxiety attached.
You listen to the news this evening, the national news this evening, they're very, you know, predicting what's happening, is the world's worst thing ever. So I mean, I can get it either way. I'll just, if you want to forego it and make that motion, if you want to have it.
Well, and there's no guarantee because you could, we're going to move into Phase 1 on Friday. We'd be in Phase 1 for two weeks.
Or four.
Or four. Go on to Phase 2, then there's another outbreak, and you go back to Phase 1, or even go back to...
And even if we're in Phase 3, you cannot really count on having much of an audience.
Right.
Because, you know, people may prefer to stay home and not go and wander around on Main Street, bumping into everybody. I just think odds are against us.
So is there any way to kind of play it, play it by ear, but the town expend no finances towards this until we know, we have a better handle on what's going to happen? And if we can control if we give any money towards Main Street Moments or not, because we usually do it by providing the police officers or the public works guys to manage the streets. So I mean, that's an option too, I just wanted to throw out there.
Could we move the date just tentatively to the October?
Yeah, we're not, we had to it, we don't have to have it.
I mean, maybe that would be a good latent word. We could tentatively move it as requested by Tassel today, and then next meeting, we'll reevaluate it again. And but I'm sure by June meeting, you either need to kill that decision. Yeah, we could go, we should have done a lot of work within that, I thought.
It really is, yeah.
Should be able to decide tentatively then. And if we find out something earlier, I'll email you out, I'll send you the cable.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'll second the motion to go ahead and move the status of date, and then to reevaluate at the next meeting.
That motion.
Well, another motion to reevaluate at the next meeting. So we need a second.
Let's go one at a time here. So can I get a motion to tentatively move the date to July 25th, or no, to August 15th? I'm sorry.
Maybe did that.
You make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the date to August 15th.
I'll second it.
Now, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Did you have a question?
I don't know if there's next month, see what happens.
That's kind of a part of that. That's the next motion.
I don't know why you had that motion. It's because you have to have two motions.
Tentatively based on the status of COVID-19 at next month's meeting.
And tentatively needs to be in that motion.
Right.
We're just waiting till next month to figure that out.
I like that too. So we have a motion to make a decision next month at the next council meeting to tentatively move the date.
Table it, it's...
Kind of what we're doing with officials.
So can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion for next month.
Okay. I get a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
What happened with the motion to tentatively move it to August?
Don't worry.
I think our attorney's brain's about to blow.
Yeah, he's like, it's...
You've got two different motions that have to be retracted. Porter Leeam's trying to figure out what's going on.
Again, I'm lost.
Just a rude yet.
Can I hear a motion to retract both of those motions right there?
Motion to retract both of them.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of retracting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so current motions are opposed, are removed.
Your next motion will be to tentatively schedule Main Street Moments for August.
15.
And of August 15th, and it will be reevaluated at the June council meeting.
I so move.
I say.
Any discussion?
I'm pretty sure I just said that.
I think so.
After you make your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Brad's like, thank God.
The Cruzeins, we know the May 16th won't happen. June won't happen, that July 25th date just moved to August 15th. So you're going to do the same thing with the Cruzein?
Yes.
That could be based on next month's decisions.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Go ahead and do.
May, June, July Cruzeins will be canceled.
I make a motion to cancel the May, June, and July Cruzein to tentatively reschedule the July Cruzein for August 15th and to have that reevaluated at our next meeting.
I'll say.
All in, oh, any discussion?
Sound good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to move to Cruzeins and cancel the Cruzein. So next is the Tassel County Prom discussion.
You got the pool.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, I missed that. So the Aqua Park in Lincolnshire Pool.
To, our recommendation is to target the July 1st dates, if at all possible, opening dates for the Aqua Park and the pool, July 1st. And keep in mind, if it doesn't change anything, if what's in place right now stands, it's not going to be a reality, but Lord, I'm just like, I could open the pool, open the Aqua Park. We'll try.
So basically, we're trying to do the same thing, so we're going to set the intent of open dates, July 1st, to be reevaluated at our next meeting.
Sure, yeah.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Any discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we'll tentatively let's open the Aqua Park and Pool on 1st of July. So next, the Tassel County Prom discussion. Manager Dan?
They want to schedule that for Saturday, July 25th, on Main Street at 7:00. Thinking that since graduation's going to be on the 25th, that the seniors will still be here on Level 10. That's kind of the thing about that date.
I say motion to approve based on COVID-19 and our ability to cater to county, by the way.
Yeah, it has been.
So if they have the prom and graduation and the stipulation...
You got a second and have discussion.
Right.
I was going to say I can be there.
You know, it's much more casual.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Give me a second, and then you go ahead and discuss all you want.
Give me a second.
Any discussion?
I'm curious about if these stipulations against groups of people close together are still, even if it's the second step, how these ceremonies can be...
They won't.
I mean, how it could even...
Won't happen.
Spread out on Main Street.
Well, the motion is, you know, based on COVID-19, we're pretty much tentatively...
That's right, the age.
Right. We're saying July 25th is tentatively the date that we will do this.
If they cancel graduation, we'll be canceling.
Correct.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Depends on how fast we move through these cases, if we move through them.
Has a bidding position from the county and it gets from our local law enforcement about the enforcement? There is a violation of these by anybody or his group?
I've talked to chief, we've kind of discussed it administratively.
What was your response?
We've discussed it administratively, so we're looking at for, trying to follow all guidelines that are set out there that have been recommended and told of all enforcement.
So no further discussions. So all in favor, tentatively moving the town, the Tassel County Prom to Main Street for July 25th, but based on the COVID-19 phase that we're in at that time, please state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion carries, we will set the date for July 25th, tentatively. So next, so now we're in our miscellaneous public comment. If there's anyone on the phone that has any comments, if you could, please stick your name and your address and limit your discussion to three minutes.
That's just background, I'm just going to mute.
Okay, so thank you, ladies and gentlemen. There's no public comment, so now I need a motion to adjourn the... a motion to adjourn the public... Hey, you have something, Brad?
If I might make some little recommendations to add one item to the executive session for ID, for IDA, based on litigation discussion, council, pending litigation for the IDA, basically involving the OSMP foreclosure bullhand in front.
So, we need a motion to add this, can I get a motion to add?
I'll make a motion to add that for the second.
You got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so it'll be added to the agenda, and now I need the motion to close the public session and go into executive session.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next.